Good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh one. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Council Vice President Ferguson, would you do the invocation, please?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Father, we just thank you for your love and your grace and your favorfulness towards us. We invite your presence into this meeting tonight, and we ask that for your guidance and wisdom and peace as we work through the business of the city. Father God, I ask that you continue to bless all of the elected officials, the citizens, the employees of the city, and their families, and keep us in good health. And Father, there have been several citizens who have passed recently, and I ask that you would strengthen the families, friends, and the loved ones who have experienced this loss. Let them feel your love and your comfort and your peace during this time, in Jesus's name I pray. Amen. And amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Farin?
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume?
Here.
Councilwoman Harriston? Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Me here.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Herring? Uh, Council Vice President Ferguson?
Here.
And Council President Curtis?
Here.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a call room. Um. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Oh, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none. The agenda is hereby adopted. Okay. Uh, so first on the agenda are, um, the pieces of legislation, uh, on the docket for the month of September. Uh, I just want to, um, to say before we get into this that, um, it is, it is my desire that we, as a council, actually use the work session to work on the legislation so that by the time we get to, uh, regular hearing, uh, that it will be ready for vote, and we won't be relitigating or trying to go through and, you know, work out, uh, the piece of legislation so that can help the flow of things. Uh, so, uh, we're gonna take our time and go through these, uh, to make sure if people have any questions, they can have, uh, uh, ask the questions here. If they're in discussion, we can have it here. There are mistakes or errors in the resolution that we can catch it here, so by the time we get, uh, the one that it's ready for the public hearing, uh, and two, that by the time it gets to the, um, regular session, then we're just really voting on it, unless there is some, you know, legal thing that we did not catch or, um, of course, there are always the exceptions, but for the most part, most of our legislation should be ready to go at the regular session. So with that, um, the first thing on the agenda item today is a resolution to authorize the purchase of four police vehicles. And I'll pull that up. Make it big, I want to see. And share my screen. I don't know, everybody wanted, but okay. All right, here we go. All right. Uh, Vice President Ferguson, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, a resolution authorizing the purchase of four police vehicles from New Holland Auto Group. Um, I'm pretty sure our council has had the ability to look this over. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to this piece of legislation? Any edits? Councilwoman, uh, Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, I was wondering. Okay, I see it says, um, four new vehicles to increase the effectiveness of the department. Now, are these for additional? Are they replacing? Um, but vehicles that are down or not running, or are they in addition to? They're added to the fleet?
Uh, they're, good evening, everyone. Uh, Chief Bryant, um, welcome back to the session, everyone. Uh, happy to be here. Um, Vice President Ferguson, um, those vehicles are being replaced. Um, we're replacing, uh, two unmarked vehicles, which is, um, lieutenant, lieutenant, uh, vehicle, the captain's vehicle, with unmarked vehicles, and the two marked vehicles will be replacing, uh, the 2012 118 and the 2012 119.
It's all the the ones that are being replaced, are they gonna be, uh, are they a surplus, or they'll just be additional, um?
Well, um, we're gonna surplus, we're gonna surplus one of the vehicles, and we're gonna surplus one of the unmarked vehicles. Um, but we, we need like an extra, um, unmarked vehicle, so when a vehicle going serve, going to shop, and then we need an extra vehicle on a, the, the extra vehicle for when a vehicle going to shop. But, um, we'd be surplusing 118 and 119 because, uh, they don't, they don't make parts for those vehicles anymore, so we'd be surplusing those two, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the president.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. Are there other questions related to this, uh, resolution? And this was in the budget, Chief?
Yes, sir.
All right. Hearing no other questions, sorry, so edits, we will move to the next, uh, which is a resolution authorizing the outfitting of the four police vehicles. Are there any questions, concerns, or edits relating to the outfitting of the four vehicles, uh, in the previous legislation? Okay. Hearing none? We will move on to a resolution to authorize an agreement with Lexi Poll to implement Police Manual and Police One Academy. Chief, could you give us, um,
Yes.
background on the, on the, the training and the academy?
Yes, so I, I, I know you guys remember when we first did the first part, uh, Lexi Poll, and we got a $7,000, um, grant from Legit to help us. Um, that was basically, that $14,000 went to build, uh, the manual, um, so we can have our own general orders, uh, for the city going on, because, um, pretty much we were following the guidelines with Prince George's County, in which ways, in which some ways we still do, uh, with certain things. But, um, we were able to build our own manual, um, and definitely that cost was for, so, uh, the person at Lexi Poll, um, Vicky Cutliff, myself, the captain lieutenant, uh, we spent countless hours going over general orders, uh, making sure that they fit the guidelines for the municipalities. Um, so it, it came up to about, um, I think, uh, we went, it took us about, uh, five months, and I think it's like seventeen hundred pages, um, general orders, which I do have a copy for the council. I just waited, I have it for you guys, for you guys to, uh, look at for review, um, down the road, but I do have it, um. It was, um, sent to me, and it's in the system now. So basically, what the officers have to do now is, um, go into the system and acknowledge each general order, and, um, acknowledge it, and that way being the system saying that they acknowledge your general orders in case we have any violations in the future. Um, the second part is the part for, um, Police One, um, Academy Training, which you actually do online training for different categories, um, which is elected by myself. The captain lieutenant, what we feel is beneficial, uh, for the City Glen Arden Officers. Some of the classes, um, are also taught at the academy, and down the road, they won't have to pay for these classes at the academy, can actually take them online. They got a certain amount of time to get it done. Uh, it's checked, and it's saved, and they get certification for it, and some of it is approved by, um, the Merlin Police and Training Commission, Police Corrections Training Commission. So, um, that's something I was trying to get done since I first got here, and, um, I'm happy that we were able to move forward in reference to it. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Any questions from council on this resolution? Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk, I forgot with the first two resolutions, I'll take me on there. Yeah, first two resolutions, uh, to give them numbers. So this resolution will be R dash zero three, twenty twenty five. Uh, and the previous two will, the first, uh, I'll just do it. Um, a resolution authorizing the outfitting of four police cars will be R dash zero two, twenty twenty five, and a resolution authorizing the purchase of four police vehicles will be R dash zero one, twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Ms., uh, sorry, Councilwoman Jones?
Council President, so the, um, line item from which these, uh, the purchases are gonna be made is gonna be inserted at a, a later date or before the, before we pass the resolution, I'm sure.
Yes, ma'am. Um, yeah, um, Dean, myself, and the city manager, um, we just wanted to get it out there, and, um, then we get the budget line that it's coming from, but it's, um, it's covered as far as finances is involved.
Okay.
I have a, I have a que, I have a question for council. Uh, is it necessary to put the, the line item in there? Um, if, if we have it in the budget, and this is open to council, if we have it in the budget, um, you know, that was, um, the Treasury Department will know where it comes from, uh, so wouldn't it just make sense to leave it out? Because if we, let's say we put it in, and there is, you know, a number is off, you know, it seems like it'll be more of a hassle to, to try to come back to fix it. So do we have to put the number, the line item number in there?
I would say yes, because of the fact to cross-reference, and it shouldn't come back as a, I've never seen a line item inserted for a, a purchase, uh, incorrect. Uh, if it has been, that's been a rarity for me, but it should be, I think it should be put in there to cross, as a cross-reference, if somebody wants to look back later on and say, well, this is what the city did, this is what the request of the council was, uh, and this is the line item, the budget line item that we took it from, it'll be like a cross-reference, not only for the, to keep the, um, the treasurer humble, uh, you know, um, transparent, and to also keep, um, the audits and, um, any other, um, documents that need to, uh, specify, need to specify what the line item are. That's just my thoughts. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. All right. Other comments or edits? We'll move on to the next. The next is a resolution authorizes the purchase of electric, electronic live scan fingerprinting and equipment for the City of Glen Arden Police Department. Are there any questions or concerns related to this resolution? Chief, uh, I did have one question. I thought that the, I mean, clearly it's more expensive, but I thought the machine was around around seventeen thousand dollars.
Uh, well, we, we end up, um, we, we got three proposals. Um, the first one for thirty thousand, and, uh, we've, no way we've gone with that. Um, we got one for seventeen thousand, um, and then the last one we got was a piggyback, and that came to nineteen thousand, but that came with the services and stuff too, so it's like an extra two thousand dollars, so they run a seventeen, nineteen thousand range. That's why I asked for twenty in the budget. Yeah. Both in the range, yeah. So, um, yeah, that's the best one, and, um, uh, the city manager's on, he can pretty much explain the part about piggybacking on there, um, in reference to that, if that need to be explained to you guys, if reference.
Um, you said who? The city manager?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Simpson, 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 oh. Okay, Mr. Simpson, I think this is the one, uh, that has some late edits. Could you let us know what was edited?
Yeah, uh, there were, uh, a particular line item that was, uh, added, or I should say, uh, just some confusion in providing the resolution and some language from some other resolution, I think was, was there. Uh, it was caught, we, uh, removed that. The council clerk does have it. I believe she may have sent it. Um, the live scan machine, we were able to piggyback from, I believe it was the state of Maryland.
Yes.
Chief.
Yes.
And just as we made our purchases with other vehicles and other equipment, um, and considering that the state of Maryland has the same, process and purchasing relative to the section, I think it's eight point eight of the city charter for competitive bidding, um, we thought that was the, the, the better option, uh, for this. Otherwise, I believe we'd have to go to RFP.
Okay, let me try to pull that up so we can look at a more accurate um, resolution. There we go. Um, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, we just, you know, once again, I'm looking for the budget line item, even though it's coming from, it looks like it's coming from ARPA funds, but still that, um, line should be in here also.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Simpson?
Yes, I do have the, uh, budget line items, the, uh, we did provide that, uh, we got those today, um, and we'll be able to insert those, or I can provide them, uh.
Okay, just, just.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones, what did you say?
Yes, so the correction will be made by the time we get ready to vote on the, uh, legislation.
Yes, it'll be actually ready for, uh, the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Madam Clerk, I believe this one would be it will be oh four, R dash oh four dash twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if there are no other comments, we'll move on to the next one. The last one, which is a resolution of, of no confidence in the mayor of the City of Glen Arden. Are there any questions, comments, edits from council? All right. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, this will be oh five. R dash zero five dash twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Okay. Um, moving on to the reports. And I know, uh, previously, members have held comments on reports, on administrative reports into the regular session. I think that's fine. Um, the, the biggest push um, this year is just make sure we're working on legislation in the work session, but since citizens' comments about reports are in the regulation, um, this is just another opportunity for us, uh, council members to speak on it. So if there are any questions for any other, the, um, mayor's report, city manager's report, public works report, code enforcement report, police chief of police report, or the city treasurer report, uh, here's another opportunity for, for council members to speak on that. Are there any questions, comments on any of the administrative reports? Okay. Hearing none, we will don't have anything else to share, so I'll stop sharing, and we will move on to the topics of discussion. First topic of discussion, um, sorry, one second. This looks to be that have included the none of them missing it. The two topics of discussion from Councilwoman Jones, which I may edits on, that should be in here. So I'll just from prior memory, I think we can do a consensus to add, uh, to include that in a discussion, since it's just a, a discussion and not legislation. Um, anyone opposed to adding that discussion to this meeting? Hearing none, we will add it, and I'll put those first so we don't forget it. Um, so, the first one was the, Councilwoman Jones, I'll just turn it over to you. Uh, one was, um,
Retirement.
Salaries and retirement. So, uh, why don't you start off with the retirement first, and we can get to the salaries?
Okay, so we were gonna come back to the retirement fund, um, in September, due to the information that we were given. I was wondering if the council had come to a, a decision, uh, council members had come to a decision as to which plan we wanna implement, or did we wanna wait until Mr. uh, Stewart is returned to, um, do an overview again of the plans for the citizens to hear, um, or do we wanna move forward?
Um, I will speak for all the other council members, uh, for myself, I'm not ready to move forward. Um, it would be great to have just a recap, I, um, yeah, it might be good to have a recap for all council members, but I'll let, if anybody opposes that, I'll let them chime in on it.
Well, I agree that, I, I agree that, uh, Mr. Stewart or, or, uh, Ms. Schultz should, uh, give us a recap, uh, because things may have changed since what they submitted before. But this is something that, you know, I, I feel like, um, employees, um, we need to change our way for employees, you know, make a way for employees to have a better retirement plan, especially our police officers. And with that, I'll go right into the police salaries, um, looking at the, um, email that was sent to us on August seventeenth by Chief Bryant concerning, uh, the police department and how we're losing police, police officers and the money that we're investing to, to have, uh, to bring police officers on board. You know, our retention, um, is not great in the City of Glen Arden. It's because of salary and, uh, retirement. So, uh, if we're going to, uh, I think I heard, uh, that we're planning on to, um, re, um, to look at the budget again and to send in a budget amendment for certain things. I think if, if the, um, city manager and the treasurer can get together, and if they can see, uh, somewhere in the budget where we can raise the police officer's salaries, and not only the police officers, e, even if we can only do these two departments first, the police officers and code enforcement, so we can get code enforcement officers, and then we can retain police officers, we need to look at their salaries, if it's, if they're somewhere in the budget that we have monies that we can raise the salaries across the board. Uh, they may already have a plan, uh, hearing that this is one of the things that I wanted to bring forth. Uh, they may not, but I think that that would be wise for us as a council to, uh, implement, um, uh, salary raises for the police officers and code enforcement, maybe this year, maybe next year, and then the next year we work on another department until we bring everybody up to, up to par as far as salaries are concerned. Because that was one of the reasons why I was, uh, adamant about the budget, and you know, I was abstaining because, you know, it, the budget looked good, but it still didn't look good for employees as far as salaries, especially in our, uh, public service area.
Well, Councilwoman Jones, I, I agree, um, and, yeah, I'm a hundred percent on board with taking a look at this. Um, also know that it that we can't do that without taking a second look at the budget and making some cuts. Um, as I understand it, the ARPA funds are supporting this budget, um, and if the ARPA funds are supporting this budget, uh, then, um, you know, that leaves a gap, where we have to fill in that gap. Um, I'm, I'm happy to, um, I don't know, almost.
Maybe we could have the city manager and the chief look at it and see if they, and when Mr. Dean return, Mr. Stewart returns, uh, possibly look at it and see if they can find, uh, because also, we also had that, um, tax rebate money. I, I still haven't gotten a report from, um, that yet as far as how much was spent and how much is left over in that pot that we could use, also use, uh, and I, I'm not, and I'm not asking our council, I'm not, my expectation is not for the council to pay more than the city can, can, can render. We, we wanna stay within our budget, we wanna stay within our means, but I think with, with the budget that we have, with the monies that we have, we can do a little better in the police salaries than what we've done. Especially this, reading this report that was sent out, this email that was sent, uh, that answered Councilwoman Reed's question concerning, uh, will we have to replace, or is, are we short-staffed? And the chief, uh, went over and said, yes, we definitely are short-staffed, and we're losing police officers because of, uh, salaries and, uh, retirement, better benefits.
Hmm. So we have a um, salary classification study that's been done. I'm almost, no, I'm almost, I'm thinking if maybe you want to form a committee to take an in-depth look at, um, our salaries across the board, um, and seeing where we can go with it in relation to our budget. Uh, because I think it would be prudent to look at all areas to see if we can support it. It's just gonna take some work to do that. Uh, so, Councilwoman Jones, if, if you're willing to be on a committee to do an in-depth analysis of it, I'm willing to, um, to work with you on that, uh, and then come up with a strong proposal on how we can implement that over, you know, or how we, basically just how we can implement that. Is that something?
Sure, but, you know, just even just to see if, if we have the, uh, if we have the means as a city, you know, to, to even do that. I think Chief Bryant had his hand up.
Chief?
Yes, um, uh, thank you very much. I appreciate you guys, um, attempting to look into this. Uh, but this is a very serious issue, um, as I stated in the email, um, it's something that's gonna take time, um, so we just don't wanna put a Band-Aid on it, or we gotta come up with something concrete. Um, so let's take our time with it and come up with something concrete, but we, you know, Um, so let's take our time with it and come up with something concrete, but we, you know, let's be fair across the board, um. And so we can retain our officers cuz we're losing more money. Putting officers through training and buying uniforms and stuff. And we're, we're losing big time, so, um. As I was stating earlier, um, I've been here two years and four months and we lost twelve officers, twelve out of, twelve out of nineteen. And if you look at the city as a whole, out of forty-one employees, in two years, thirty-three been replaced. Out of forty-one employees for the city of Glenard, to include two city managers, is broken down by, um. By each category, each department. So I think it's not only the police department, I think the whole city, uh, we need, we need, we need to take a serious look into this. Um, cuz we have some talented individuals, um. You know, I try to look out for the officers and stuff, um. Officers leaving and going right down to the next jurisdiction to make a fifteen thousand dollar more, you know? Um, I got chiefs of police making fifty thousand dollars more than me right down the road. But for me, it's about the officers, so I'm not too concerned about myself, um, I'm concerned about the officers and their, and their future. And, uh, and all the employees for the city of Glenard, cuz we got some great workers and we've been losing some good workers. Um, they've been establishing themselves, um, making an impact, and then soon as they leave, we have to start over again. Financially, um, relationship-wise, um. Mentally, i- i- it's a whole big process, so let's take our time, let's look into this. And when I say take our time, I mean, take our time looking and not taking our time getting to it. But once we get to it, let's look into it and, uh, make them, you know, make a decision on what we're gonna do, um, cuz right now, um. We're in a state that's not only fair, it's unfair to the officers and to our citizens, um, when I don't have enough officers to patrol the, the street for call for service. And all two officers going to a scene where I need three and four officers on a scene where, um, you got people fighting on the scene. And something like that, so it's, it's, it's a dangerous situation all the way around, so it's something, um. We really need to look into and, um, I don't mind being on the panel, board or whatever, but I most definitely appreciate, um. Um, you guys asking the question, um. When Farid asked the question, it was an opportunity for me to really let you guys know exactly what we're going through. Um, and I tell the guys all the time, real call, you know, we took the oath. We took the oath, so we're gonna come out there and do our jobs, but, um. Me holding guys over every day, um, mandatory. Um, they start to wear the guys out, takes a lot of money out of our budget, you know, so we're hurting ourselves more than we're helping. And it's not fair to the officers, our citizens, all the city council. So, um, the city of Glenard, so that's something we really need to consider and, and when I speak on that, I speak for, um, every department. You know, um, so that's something we need to look at, so, um, anything I can do to help out, sit in the panel or whatever. Um, but I know, uh, HR been working with, uh, the treasurer and the city manager, we're aware of what's going on. But we need to, you know, we, we, we need to act and we need to act fast cuz, um. I'm losing officers and it's starting to become a big problem, and I don't want us to go to a situation where. My officer's safety is in jeopardy and we have to go to part-time when we shut down a certain time, cuz we don't have the manpower to cover our city. Cuz our city is growing, so we need our force to grow to meet the needs of the city, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, Councilwoman Jones, then we can connect, um, and start working on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Schultz, if you could work with, uh, Mr. Store, just to. Give us a recap, um, on the retirement. Um, options.
Yes, sir, um, we have Dean and I have the treasurer and I have been talking about it. And I will have a recap for you. Open by the, uh, public hearing.
Both, okay, all right. Don't wanna say.
Well, I can tell, well, let me back up, let me back in. Have been dealing with Mutual of America. We've coming up with a, uh, uh, an alternative. Uh, Dean is working with numbers and working with the, um, representative directly from Mutual of America. That's why I say hopefully by, uh, next, next week, he should be able to give you, uh, a better rundown as well as with him. And, um. Uh, uh, up to date recap, cuz Steve's been out two, so I don't know what he's been doing, regarding it.
Okay, so we'll just give you time, you don't have to rush it for the public hearing, um. Just work with him and, and if you can get back with, um, or just email, uh, Vice President Ferguson now with the, a best time. And then we'll make sure we can get you guys on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. Next topic of discussion is the trash contract extension, uh, to include Ryan Holmes, Mr. Sh- Mr. Simpson.
Evening, yes, um, I did get a, uh, had reached out to Good, uh, requesting an extension. Um, considering that the trash contract will expire, it's, uh, at the end of this month. Um, I got it late on Friday, uh, Council President, uh, making, forwarding this over to you for. Council's consideration, um, they are suggesting a year contract. Um, and it is definitely something, uh, that we need to decide on, um. Moving forward. We also, I'm sorry, I was just making sure I was for it, we also need to air. Um, do an MOU for the Ryan Holmes, the townhomes, uh, on Hamlin Street, uh, as they're building. Uh, it's also another topic of discussion, uh, because they have submitted their request for the next phase. For council's approval, uh, they submitted that to Code about a week and a half, two weeks ago. Um, so you should have those particular numbers and, uh, we definitely see council's, uh, decision on what to do next with that.
So there are two things, the MOU and the extension, right, of, with G.
So, yes, I believe we would want, that's two things, we wanna do the MOU while we're, uh, contending with the extension, of course. Think it would be wise to be able to include that or get that covered as well. But yes, two things, the extension and an MOU for Ryan Holmes.
Uh, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, thank you, Council President, uh, so, uh. We're gonna receive, uh, the paperwork, the documentation from Good as far as what the extension is gonna be?
Have it, I am just forwarding it now. Delayed on Friday evening, so.
So I see it. Thank you for forwarding it. When, when does the, um, our current contract run out?
Uh, twenty-sixth of September, I believe.
Okay, and this is just a, an extension?
Correct.
And, and how long the extension will be?
I didn't get that, I'm sorry.
Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm working it forward to you right now, uh. It looks like it is for two years, this would be the extension to the contract, so they're going with the existing contract dated September twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the terms of the service should be for twenty-four months from the effective date listed. Uh, above this agreement, which would be September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Was there an increase?
Yes, there is, I'm, I'm forwarding it to council. I apologize. Um, yes, the, the city of Glenard here agrees, they, they want to, uh, have the monthly amount of thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cent per unit. At a tough, uh, total monthly amount of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred, six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Bring it up once we receive it, hold on a second, you said just sent it?
Yep, I just sent it to the council and I just sent it over to you as well, personally, Curtis.
All right, let me get it on the screen. Uh, while we're waiting, uh, Councilwoman Farid?
Thank you, Council President, I have a question related to composting, does Good offer that? Um, do we, if they do, do we know what the services entail and is that something that we should perhaps consider? Um, as we're looking at renewing the contract?
I don't have a comparison on that, but I will find out.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Recording in progress.
Listen, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh. So what's the, um. So this is just the. The cost field surcharge. Yeah, go ahead, uh, Councilwoman Jones.
Uh, yes, thank you, Council President, uh, City Manager Simpson, uh, the rates that they're giving us. How do we know that they're in line with what an, any other, um, vendor would, would, would charge us? For the same services, or, or we don't know?
No, I would say, I, I couldn't say definitively, I, I do believe these numbers are, are competitive. However, uh, if we went through the RFP process, we, we would definitely have a much better idea of that. Um, we could definitely do some research and can talk with the municipalities as well, but no, we do not. Um, I'm suggesting the extension only because of the time at which our contract is about to expire.
Cuz I see this, um, the second bullet point to have a four percent CPI, I, I guess that's cost of. For water and sewer rates increase, I, I've, I've never, I don't think I've ever read that and I have to pull. Their, their contract up bef- uh, prior contracts to see, but I've never read that as far as, uh. That they were charging, uh, a percentage for water and sewer rates. To increase automatically added to the contract renewal for the following option, year two. Oh, so that's only gonna happen in year two. But I, I'm not understanding with the water and sewer. I, I just, I, I, I need to do some research. I'll look that up and find out, thank you.
Yes.
Can we go back and ask them to decrease this to, uh, and council members, you can chime in if you disagree. Um, instead of extending it twenty-four months, just twelve months. And us seriously putting on a calendar, an RFP, uh, process so that we can go out there and make the, and see. Competitively what's out there, uh, cuz I think historically. We've been hit with this at the last minute, that puts us in a place where we have to just like go with whatever's out there. And we have it now, and, and that's not, uh, anything against Schumacher Simpson, there are contracts out there that, you know. You learn about as active city manager that we have to deal with, um, but. Now putting out a set of extended two years, extend it one year, so that it is on your radar and we can get that process rolling. Immediately, uh, so that we can get, uh, some competitive numbers, um, and for us to make a decision.
Definitely, I also would like to recommend, um, our own trash service and, and work be done from that standpoint. I think you'd find that to be, uh, very beneficial to the city, uh, also can help with some of the salary things you discussed. And, and we would save, uh, quite a bit of money, uh, if we were able to go through that process.
Well, it'd be great if you could put together a proposal for us to see what that will look like. The costs associated with that, the services compared to, uh, what's out there and what we're receiving now. And then make that proposal at a future meeting so that we can all understand, uh, what that will look like. Councilwoman Jones?
Council President, I just love like minds, a feasibility study to have our own trash service. Would, uh, I think would probably greatly help the city, uh, we could buy our own truck and get, and hire. Uh, persons to do the same thing that we have been doing now and make sure that we find out. I'm sure it would be part of the, the deal to find out, you know, just where trash is dumped, how it's dumped in the county and, and, and those things. And we may be able to save, uh, more money, uh, having, you know, still probably doing it three days a week. But, uh, our own service. Thank you, Council President, Mr. Simpson.
Any other comments? Uh, so given the time, since the nature of this and the fact that we just got this. Um, we can give, uh, take a census next week at the public hearing in the extension. In the meantime, if you can go back and ask them to shorten the time from twenty-four months to one year, um, that would be great. All right. Let's start. Next is the RFQ for engineering architectural survey services. Mr. Simpson?
Yes, Council President, uh, this is just, uh, a discussion to, uh, make sure the council is aware that, uh. I know that there are discussions about our new police building, uh, if we are going in that direction, we should definitely, uh. Start this RFQ process to be able to retain engineering, architectural and surveying services. As well as clearly identify where that location is gonna be. Um, and this is just, uh, an item of discussion, uh, because I know there have been, uh, discussions about it before. Um, and I'd like to be able to work on that and have that presented for October's, uh, work session.
Okay, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you, Council President, I thought this was already in the works, but if, if not, um. It's, and the three sites that I think council had talked about before. Can we just give those, once we get the architect, the engineering architect on, on board. We can just show them the three sites and they can give us an idea of how feasible this site is. Against the site at the, across from the police station, and I think someone said, um, the site. Up some Glenard property that's on, off of seven oh four next to the, uh, Transformation Church. And then I'm not sure, but the other site, I guess it was the other site was across the street from city, across the street from the goal room, that property. So. I, I thought those were the three sites, if anybody else has something, uh, other than what I'm thinking. We just need to let Mr. Simpson know that those are the three possible sites.
I mean, do we have? Do we have reports from those sites, are those sites, I don't?
Uh, not, not to my knowledge, that, that's part of the, the, the request for, uh. Our people, the engineering and going through this process, I, I believe, I know, I've heard of, and I'm sorry, Chief Brian, uh. Of some of those sites, so wha- whatever direction the council will give on that, that would, that, that'd be perfect. But we definitely want to secure our engineering, our architectural, the survey, we want to have that underway to be able to get these things going.
Okay, so you're just, you're just letting us know there's gonna be RFQ for those services?
Yes, and, and to get the feedback is, is, uh, I'm getting now as well. Relative to, uh, okay, or have there been some sites that have been, uh, confirmed, uh, as Councilwoman Jones just mentioned? Uh, just making sure I'm retaining all the information necessary, uh, as we go about, uh, going with the RFQ process.
Yeah, I've, I've only heard about sites, but there hasn't been any. Unless I'm wrong, any like hardcore reporting on if these sites are even feasible to build on. Uh, I vaguely remember something a while ago, I, I know that, that field where, you know, we have the. Uh, vaguely remember something a while ago, I I know that that field where, you know, we have the horse riding during Glen Arden day was. Uh, an option. Um, but it was just, I I I, in my opinion, it'd be good to have. A recommendation. Um, that we can go with, because I mean, outside of, you know. Any many mighty mo, I wouldn't be able to tell you which site we should take. Um, so.
And that site that was talking about the infrastructure, uh and I'm not sure what. Someone mentioned the infrastructure, there was some, might have been some issues with getting water and sewer in there. I I don't know, I'm not an engineer. Uh, like, you know, a land engineer, so uh we need to get the engineer on board so they can look at the. Uh, possible sites that have been suggested. Now, I don't know what's been suggested to Chief Brian, but those were the three sites that I had heard, so.
Uh, hello, everyone. Uh, yes, those are the sites that, they're the only sites I heard about. Um. Since I've been with the city of Glen Arden, uh those are three sites and I went back over with a city manager. Um, but we have to get somebody in there. Um, once we get the RFQ or whatever he needs, we can move forward. Um, I got a call from Senator Benson uh two weeks ago. She just wanted, she asked that uh we submit um for another bond bill for three million. So we got um Grant Rider working on that now. Uh, and the first question she asked me all the time, where are we with this project, you know? Um. Cause when the, you know, we gotta be ready. She keeps saying shovel ready, chief, shovel shovel ready, shovel ready, shovel ready. So, um, that's why I'm really um trying to work with a city manager and just try to get this thing moving forward and. Keeping you guys involved, so we can get this uh moving forward. Especially if uh this money is presented to us, um it'd be pretty embarrassing if we're not prepared.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, so next steps, so we just don't, this this isn't just discussion. Next steps is the RFQ process, right?
Yes.
Alright, we get that in, we get these engineering people in here, they propose an actual site.
Yes.
We move on, at the same time. Working to secure uh uh um, you know, another bill to help pay for for this.
Yes.
Okay. Any objections to this process? Here now, we'll move on to the curb cut at eighty-eight oh five Glen Arden Parkway. Uh, Mister Simpson, or is this Mister?
Uh, yes, it it, I'm gonna uh, Mister Green, if you're available. Uh, eighty-eight oh five, and just for clarity, wanna just make sure as it relates to requests like this, this should be done during work session. Should this be done uh just via a group email? Is this gonna be uh done during public? So just some, for clarity sake, we just wanna make sure we get that as well, and then I'll turn it over to Mister Green.
The work session is fine, I believe it's just a consensus, right? We're not signing a contract or. Uh, anything, any formal legislation, so work session is fine.
So, uh, during the work session, you you did we go through the work session, public hearing and regular meeting before the final decision is made? Or is it just a general decision with the council?
Um, I think the general decision is just with the council. It's not a piece of legislation that needs to go to a work session, then a public hearing, then a. Um, regular session. Um, it's just a consensus.
Okay, I'll turn it, turn it over to Mister Green if you're available.
Yep, I am. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for that clarity, uh Council President. Um, eighty-eight oh five Glen Arden Parkway, which is uh currently a vacant lot, is requesting permission from the city of Glen Arden. Uh, to do a curb cut. Uh, Mister Shalaby has submitted uh all of his documentation. He submitted also uh a PowerPoint presentation that uh goes into detail. As it relates to the um, the type of property uh that he wants to build. I believe it is a. Two-story uh with a basement, single-family home. Um, again, at eighty-eight oh five, uh Glen Arden Parkway.
Is is that the one by? Unsightly build that's probably two feet away from that person's home?
Yes, Council President.
Alright, so it'd be good to see what the the plans are. Um, see what the picture should look like, at least for me, and any other council members who think otherwise, or have any other questions can ask that.
Yes, um, the plans, everything has been, this been a, this been a while in the making. I mean, the uh owner first submitted. All of the information back on July the eighteenth, it was forwarded to the former uh council clerk. Uh, it was recent uh to the current council clerk on August the uh twenty-seventh. Um, so all the information is there, the PowerPoint, the documentation, uh the plans and everything.
Okay. Alright, um, Councilwoman Jones?
Council President, so all of this has been submitted to the county also?
That, well, he started, he had, he does not have the permits from the county yet. He started off with his water and sewer permit. Uh, he's waiting to determine whether. Uh, the city of Glen Arden is going to allow a curb cut before investing anymore uh in permits.
Okay, so. By it not being submitted to the county, we don't know whether the space that he's considering, if the county is even gonna allow that.
That is a possibility, that's correct.
I just think they're doing this backwards, but, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Keep your hand is up, did you, did you have a comment about this curb cut? So, so I'll put your hand down. Alright, um. So, council members, are you guys ready to make a decision or uh? Uh, well, actually, uh Mister Green, if you could give us to next week so it can review the information, um, that'll be helpful.
No problem, thank you.
Next up is Ryan Holmes' request for building permit approval.
Yes, uh Ryan Holmes, they're ready for some additional phases, building one oh three and building one oh four. Um, so they're coming back, they have all their permits uh from the, from the county. They have made payment on their permits for the city. Uh, they just need city approval. Um, if that approval is granted by the council, the s- city permits are ready to go. Uh, we're just waiting for approval.
Okay, Councilwoman Jones?
On the uh last uh. Topic of discussion concerning um eighty-eight oh five, uh so we will be receiving that information?
Uh, yes, as I said, that information was provided to the uh council clerk. So, um, it's at her disposal, so.
Can you send it to, can you send it to the council, please? I'm pretty sure you got the council's email. So, you can, you copy the council clerk, that'd be great, but she just started, so it'd be great if you could just send it to us directly. Um, so we can just have it in our inbox.
That's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Uh, as it relates to Ryan's home's request. I vaguely remember us doing a resolution for this the first time around, did we do that?
Well, they didn't have, we, we agreed to allow them permits. For um the buildings that they have permits from Prince George's County. They didn't have permits for these specific buildings. And to my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, uh anytime they break ground on new construction, if they, they have to come. Before the the city council to get permits for, I mean, to get permission for upcoming permits.
Yep, got that. Um, and I think that's by way of consensus, that's uh by way of legislation, isn't it? Vice, uh uh maybe Miss Jones or Vice President Ferguson can help me out with this one. Councilwoman Jones?
When, when they did um Glen Arden Hills, everything they did came back, when they submitted a permit, they submitted a resolution.
But I recall them, um, given the time sensitivity of this, the first time around, we gave them approval. And then we just on a back end did a resolution. Did we do that?
Yeah, we did that the last time.
Okay, so given the nature of this, can we go the same way and just prepare a resolution, Mister Simpson, for, for this one? Um, and put that through that way?
Yes.
Is, is there any opposition to approving the permits? Here and on, then we can go ahead with the permits and bring forth the resolution so we can have it in file.
Thank you.
Uh, next is citizen appeals for council review of code enforcement.
Um, thank you. So what we have here is um. Um, appeals of code enforcement decisions with citizens uh within the city. As it relates to uh trailers and commercial vehicles. Which fall under section one four nine dash twenty-two uh point one. Uh, if you don't mind, for those who may not be familiar with this particular section. Uh, it's commercial vehicle parking uh restrictions. And it reads, no person shall park any commercial vehicle or other tractor, trailer. Or tractor-trailer combination upon any public or residential property. Except for the purpose of making local deliveries to said property. Uh, these particular addresses here under the topics of discussions are. Properties where uh trailers are parked on the property. Um, and the other, the other uh topic is for a commercial vehicle. The citizens are wishing to come before the council and have the council uh hear their case. To appeal to decisions that's made by code enforcement.
Any comments from council? I thought that, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you. Um, so what what's the steps that you, that 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 is being requested? That the council looks at all of these appeals and determines. I mean, I'm sure each person uh that has the, well, let's say for the four addresses that we have. They probably have specifics about, you know, maybe some of them can um. Place the trailer someplace that we can't see, that it's not being seen, or. Is it just you're looking for a definite no across the board for everybody because of what the charter has written? Or, I mean, what, what?
Yeah, the um, you know, that would definitely help code enforcement as it relates to. Getting a understanding of of the council's intent. Um, when this section of the code uh was created. Um, and some of the individuals are 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 saying that, especially for the commercial vehicles. That there was a point in time a few years ago where there was a big meeting at the council. And they were instructed that as long as they park their commercial vehicle on their property. Then they would not be into, you know, in in violation. I don't see that written anywhere, uh so, you know, I can't substantiate whether that did or did not happen. Um, and as it relates to trailers, um, what I think is that there is some misunderstanding. That uh me uh and Officer Jones has been working through with the citizens. Is that because of where, because of the location, where it talks about trailers. What we hear a lot of is, my trailer is not a commercial trailer, it is a residential trailer. But what we have found is that um, that is not the case. Because it's located under commercial vehicle parking, it is not saying that you can, you can't have a commercial trailer. But you can have what people are deemed a residential trailer. And I think that's causing a lot of confusion uh within the community as it relates to whether they can have trailers or not. And so, I think what the citizens are asking is to come before the council. So that uh they can get clarity as far as the intent of the council. With it, as far as it relates to section one four nine dash twenty-two point one.
Okay, the problem with that is when one four nine point two one was written, it was written years ago before. Even when I, before I was on the council, so the intent then, because you can always look, take, take the, the. The idea that then, when it was written then, you know, maybe we didn't have the. Um. The type of workers that we have now, because like I said, when, when my family first moved to Glen Arden. Most of the families that were, that lived in Glen Arden were government workers. So there were no uh vehicles with trailer, with ladders on it, not very many. With ladders on it or this, and you know, those types of things. I remember one family that had a, I knew they had a um. Their own business and they had trailers in that uh uh of that uh nature. And they would have them parked someplace else, because I think at that time, the county wouldn't allow you to park uh those type vehicles in the neighborhoods. Uh, the county still doesn't allow commercial vehicles, but it seems like the county's gone lax on. You know, what, what they're doing, but as a municipality, we can uh uh put in place what it is that we wanna do. So I think what maybe the council needs to do is to look at, you know, what's going on now and how we can better serve. The, the type of citizens that we have now. Uh, I I I hope that helps, you know, I would. I I see Councilwoman Guillaume's uh hand up, so maybe she can give us her, her insight on um, you know. What direction we might need to go in that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mister Green, for bringing this up and also piggybacking off of where. Um, Councilwoman Jones left off. Um, none of us, well, those of us, I I. I believe those council members who are on the call tonight, we, none of us were here when that law was in the section of the charter was, was. Um, even crafted, so mi- the um, Miss Councilwoman Jones is correct on that. I will say that also piggybacking off of where Councilwoman Jones um left off. Is when the city of Glen Arden was constructed, especially at the time in in. Where I feel like it's extremely impacted as far as the commercial vehicles was the Ward One section in particular. Those, a lot of these homes were single-family homes where they were occupied by one family, whereas right now today, as we look at things. Um, and the demographic, a lot of these homes, it's more of a zoning issue where a lot of these homes. Where instead of it being a single family, they're being rented out by different people and different people have different and different cars. And even more than usual traffic than than expected. So, for me, I know that o- of over a year ago, we had brought this up. Um, as a council, and we were trying to look for a way for some form of a compromise. Because I do believe that it, it's ridiculous, I can't think of another word, but I think it's ridiculous that you have one property with. More than two, three commercial vehi- it's, it's absurd. Like, I could see if there was one commercial vehicle and it's parked in a driving. Um, excuse me, in a driveway, but when you have one property with a whole bunch of cars, it becomes very difficult. For the community to even, you know, entertain their own um selves or livelihood. Now, at the same time, there are also folks who actually have. Commercial vehicles that are emergency commercial vehicles where their job stipulates that they have to have it. Because if there is an emergency in the neighborhoods, they can actually access those neighborhoods. So there's Pepco, there's Washington Gas, and there's Verizon, there's those type of um companies. And we have to also look at those individuals and see what's fair, what's not fair. So for me, I thi- I think, again, we, we did hear of this before. I think it was one of those, it's either this way or that way versus a compromise. And I'm for a compromise, but what I will also say is, is, and I wanna be. and I want to be very clear about this, is I am not for dog whistle legislation. And dog whistle legislation is you're actually saying that this is the type of law that we need to implement when really is discriminating against a population. So whatever legislation we're bringing forth, whether it's legislation that's already in the charter or not, I want to be very clear that we need to, and I, and I like what, what, what Councilwoman Jones said, we need to look at the demographic of the city as it stands right now and to try to make sure that all are equitably treated fairly. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Guillaume. Uh, Mr. Green, is there, um, can we stand up a system that tracks permitting in the, the city? How long or um difficult will that be to stand up?
Council President, when you say track permitting, can you give me a little more information on exactly what you mean?
Uh, for example, when, I grew up in Washington DC, so I had a Zone Two sticker on my car. Uh, and there was a sign that said only Zone Two people can park here. Um, and so when the ticket people came across, they saw the Zone sticker, they left me alone. Is there, um, and I'm pretty sure there was a system that backed that. So is there a system by which homeowners uh can apply for a permit? That could be free, it doesn't have to be charged, we don't have to charge our citizens for it, where there's a, a permitting process uh for, if I work at Pepco and I know I'm gonna have to have a utility vehicle, having a permit for that vehicle so that when code enforcement goes around, you see the, the permitting sticker on it, um, and you leave that vehicle alone. And we come up, uh, you know, i- it's partnered with legislation that just for example says that each home is allowed one utility vehicle uh via permitting, something like that.
I'm sure there's something that can be done, if you allow me a little time, just to check into it and, and try to get it together and, and present something to the council.
Have, in, in your experience in other uh positions, have you seen permitting systems like that?
Um, I've heard about them, I haven't seen any. I will, I would like to add this, is that in the town of Capitol Heights, they are having sort of the same situations with commercial vehicles. There were permits issued to property owners to allow them commercial vehicles within the town. Uh, speaking with a zoning official with Deepie, Deepie had a problem with that because Deepie does not allow commercial vehicles in residential areas. So there was a, there was a bumping of the heads between the municipality and Deepie. I don't know what they came up with. This was just brought to my attention a couple of weeks ago. Um, um, so I'm not sure how that would exactly work.
You know, it'll just involve research to see what what vehicles they're talking about. I mean, we wouldn't want a eighteen-wheeler tractor-trailer being parked in residential area, that wouldn't make sense. But a utility vehicle uh for Pepco would make sense. Um, so just some research on, you know, basically what is, you know, what is that Deepie is talking about? Does it include all types of commercial vehicles and, and just getting back to the council on that?
Yep, going to Council President.
All right. Did Mr. Herring ever join the? Next one is Mr. Herring's, um, Councilman Herring's Taco discussion, but we can table that and go to the next one, uh, which is the Church Street sidewalk, and that was paired with uh Vice President Ferguson and Councilman Herring. So Vice President Ferguson, did you want to speak on uh the Church Street sidewalk?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to, um, uh, have Mr. Simpson address, um, the walk, we get a walkthrough, um, for the, um, Church Street sidewalk, and it was, I'll say that it was, I'll get it done, I just want to get a follow-up, oh. Some of that point.
Good evening. Yes, uh, Vice President Ferguson, uh, so Nelson did confirm that his numbers will still be the same uh, from what we sent before. Uh, I have not yet reached out to the resident that lives, uh, that one house with the sort of uh makeshift driveway they had there. Uh, I have not had an opportunity to reach out to them just yet. However, uh, everything else does seem extremely feasible, possible. We can definitely, once we get that other information confirmed, um, uh, be presented, we could definitely present a resolution to install that, that sidewalk there in Church Street. We don't anticipate any problems whatsoever.
And it was stated that it could be done uh by, before December thirty first?
Oh, it can definitely be done before this year. Uh, and if you choose to use our funds, it not only could be obligated via contract, but it can also be completed uh, by that timeframe.
Okay, yeah, cuz that, that, that's definitely a necessity, uh, just the children having to walk in the street and so at this point, um, we just need, um, so you need to talk to the, the person in the, uh, about their driveway, and then he did say something about moving that one, um, lamppost that wasn't being used, we need to contact someone on that?
Yeah, to also contact BG and E, they've already been contacted, I haven't heard back from them just yet. That work, in, in, uh, from what I do know in the context, that work is definitely something that can be expedited, because it looks like they'd already uh, per our walkthrough, uh, they already started some of the transfer of their pole, when it looked like it was just communication, uh, meaning Comcast over Verizon, and then it's just a matter of, uh, the pole being removed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. And what's the price associated with that again?
Uh, I was trying to look at, I think it's about ninety-three K, if I remember correctly, but I will resend the proposal that I believe we sent to the council, if not, I'll make sure. Uh, the update, I talked with NZI today, just trying to get him to confirm all the numbers, uh, based upon what we walked through, I walked with, and he's meeting me to confirm two other locations on tomorrow. But I believe it's about ninety-three thousand. I will send that to you, uh, and tell the council.
Okay. Councilwoman Jones?
Sure, but, because I'm still looking for that. And I haven't, haven't received that yet, so, um. Are you, what do you use, the city council as, um?
Yep. Yep. Oh, no, I actually think that too. That was Council Card, I don't want that.
Okay, so you can send both of those, you know, and whatever, by the end of the meeting, you'll probably have more documents to send, you can just send those, uh, at your leisure, not at your leisure, but business tomorrow. Not anything, I don't think any of us are gonna really read tonight. Some of us may, but some of us may not.
No, I'll please send it at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the Seven Street Park status update, Mr. Simpson.
Uh, yes, uh, it's progressing, uh, at that location. Uh, it may be a slight uh, may be pushed back a week or two, because it looks like there's some fencing, uh, we may, mainly there wasn't a, it because of a slope, uh, but nothing uh major there. I'm actually meeting with NZI as well as Playground Specialist tomorrow, I believe at eleven AM. Um, just to confirm that and to narrow down the actual completion date. Uh, if you've been out on the site, you should see, uh, a lot of the dirt mounting, you should see some of the um, equipment actually being installed as well. Um, so it is progressing, uh, as planned, uh, and it actually is, is, is turning out pretty good so far. Uh, so just wanted to give an update there. I will have a estimated completion date or better idea of completion, uh, after tomorrow's construction meeting. Um, if I may, um, that also leads us, no, I'm sorry. Go right ahead, Seven Street Park status update, that was, that was that there.
Okay. Councilman Farid?
Um, first, I'd like to start by commending Acting City Manager Simpson on um, helping to get this going. We, you know, reached some hurdles in getting this underway, but since he's been, um, Acting City Manager, we have seen, um, this be expedited, and I really appreciate that. Um, we are having a, or hoping to have a grand opening on um, Saturday, October fifth. That information will be going out in the city newsletter. It will be a nice time for everyone out, to come out and see the new park. Um, and we've set it for that date to allow for enough time for any of, you know, potential construction slippages, things that we need to do around fencing. Um, and we also learned today that neighborhood design is willing to work with us for landscaping, and so we'll be reaching out to them to find out what more that entails, but it sounds like, um, it's a, it's a nice addition that will be available to the park um, as well as the community gardens. Um, there's a space at Seven Street Park that will be designated for that, and so more information to come, we're really excited about it. And again, thank you to Acting City Manager Simpson.
Thank you. Speaking of community garden, that's the next topic of discussion. Is there anything further, Mr. Simpson?
No, I would just say that you should look for some, uh, other updates coming with that as the as we come closer to the completion of the park. Uh, it's essential for that to be finished so that we can, um, proceed with the landscaping as well as the community garden, which, uh, believe is gonna be a nice uh, blend and mix of the two. So, uh, you should be receiving some new updates regarding that as well, very, very, very soon.
Okay. All right, um, speed bump program update. I'm sorry, one second. Councilwoman Guillaume?
No, it's okay, Council President. Um, I put it up while your head was turned, so I apologize also. I'm not gonna ta- take long. I just wanted to say that while Councilwoman Farid acknowledged, um, the wonderful, um, work of Acting City Manager, I know that both myself and Council Vice President are co-sponsors of this resolution to get the park going, moving forward, but I have to acknowledge Councilwoman Farid's steadfast commitment to ge- getting this to the finish line. Without her, this would not be possible, and I want to make sure that that is recorded, um, because it's been a long time coming, and I'm just so happy to be here and to watch her shine while we co-sign with her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kudos, Councilwoman Farid. I know you've worked really hard on this, so well deserved, kudos. Or, well, did I cut somebody off? No, I didn't cut anybody off. We're going on to the next topic, which was speed bump program updates, Mr. Simpson.
Uh, I am actually going to, we just want to gather some information, I think some questions. Uh, Jordan McClung, he is on, uh, Jordan, uh, if you can unmute yourself. Uh, he wanted to certainly ask a couple of questions there as we work to get the speed bump program, uh, off the ground here, and, uh, I'll turn it over to Jordan.
Uh, thank you, Charles, and evening, council members. So just, uh, give you a, a quick rundown. Um, we've already done the research on the administration side in terms of what products to use in terms of, um, heavy-duty speed bump. So, uh, these speed bumps range from six and a half feet to about twenty-two and a half feet, and the prices range from three hundred and eighty-eight dollars to about, uh, one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So on average, these, these speed bumps, if we're not using our own stock, already cost about, um, nine, nine hundred and thirteen dollars each, uh, and depending on the size. Um, the resolution that you guys passed in twenty-twenty-two gave us about twenty-five thousand dollars of ARPA funds to use towards this, so if we, if we look at the average price of each speed bump, we can roughly afford twenty-seven um, throughout the city, um, again, depending on the size. Uh, so with that information, um, the biggest question we have is where in, in the city would the council like to have to establish? I, I know the resolution calls for at least one in each ward, but one ward might have a, a stronger issue than others. I also want to let you guys know that if we, if we do go out and, and buy, uh, these, these rubber speed bumps, we'll need, the installation will, uh, have us kind of drill into the concrete, um, load the surface to have it installed. So I just wanted to have that in your forefront. So, but the biggest question we have on, on the administration side is, is the location. Where, of course, we have anecdotal information for residents, but you all live here, so, um, please just let us know, um, this is the time.
I have a question as it relates to the, the drilling in the concrete. So, this is a pilot program. Is this meant, this is, uh, with the drilling, is it meant to be permanent?
Not to my knowledge, um, it, I don't know if it would could be, um, fixed at a later date, but from my own research, from what I've found, uh, these heavy-duty rubber speed bumps, if we're gonna put them in places where, uh, speed limits at, at average twenty-five miles per hour, then we're gonna want to have them bolted to the ground.
Um, and, and I asked because I was gonna strongly advocate for Sir Micro Place and Glen Arden Parkway. Um, and, uh, but with the drilling in the streets, I thought it was just gonna be just a just something rubber that we can remove, but if they're gonna be drilling, then we, yeah, that might be a lot, given the street, given that the streets have not been turned over yet. But I am not aware, and maybe we could talk to, uh, Chief Brian of any reports that he gets of speeding within the city, some high um, hotspot areas. Uh, Chief Brian, do you know of any hotspot areas that you would?
Yeah, we got, uh, we got quite a few, um, um, between, um, the two-hundred block and seven-hundred block of Glen Arden Parkway heading towards, uh, Ward Three. Um, that, that speeding, that speed idea is unreasonable, uh, most of the time in that area. That's one of the major areas where the guys, uh, due to, uh, some traffic and, um, traffic stopping, and that's one of the main areas. Of course, over by St. Michael's and Glen Arden Parkway, um, especially coming up to the stop sign and that speeding and not stopping for the stop sign. So, um, that's over in the Ward, uh, Ward Two, Ward Three area, and Ward One, um, is basically in the main thoroughfares, like, uh, MLK, um, over there. Um, on the other side, in Ward One and Glen Arden Parkway, we don't get too much speeding, um, ever getting Ward Three. And Ward Two going into Ward Three. But, uh, we can, um, I can get with the staff, uh, get with the officers and stuff, and, um, come up with the most specific areas where they concentrate most of the time, getting most of the tickets, um, we, that shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you, Chief Brian. Uh, Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, there's, uh, speeding on Glen Arden Parkway, uh, coming um, going towards the school going down that way, Fifth Avenue, Hay Street. I think there was, um, Councilman Herring had some, uh, that he had mentioned, but definitely, um, those are three areas. I know there's some Ward One.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, I'll get with officers and stuff, and we, we can get, I can get you some locations in all three wards, it wouldn't be a problem.
Oh, and also, um, over there, I think it's Coke Street, um. Yeah, um. Yeah, Coke Street.
And, and Council President, if I may?
Yes.
Um, I, I just wanted to add, I'm, I'm sure there are other products out there that require, that don't require drilling into the street, it's just that those, those are just less effective and are smaller in size. They, they might calm the street down, that's effective enough, but they won't be as effective as, uh, as ones that are bolted into the ground, as they're much larger.
Okay, yeah, cuz that would be my question. Okay, yeah, cuz that would be my question is, once those temporary bumps are up, who's gonna repair the street?
Very good point, yep.
Oh. Um, a- at this point, I'm willing to take, you know, something that's, you don't have to drill, that we can pull up, even if it, this is, and 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 with Vice President Ferguson says on some other areas, it's it's a racetrack. Um, uh, I know that on Glen Arden Parkway, all the way up Glen Arden Parkway, I think the one thing that Ward One has is that there are stop signs as you head up to Glen Arden Woods, which is very helpful. Uh, in the Woodmore resident area, there aren't any stop signs. So I mean, there've been a, there's been a car that ran into a house. Uh, I know that's been in other places too, but um and so I I just want something that in in between times of us negoti- of not negotiating, cuz it's not negotiation, D R Horton just needs to hand over the streets, do what they need to do and handle the streets. Um, but if there's a a temporary solution that does not involve uh drilling into the streets that can help us out in some way, so.
And that, and I think that's possible, and I think we can, we can do that. Um, another question is, is how long do we plan on um having these in place in the city? How long do we want to run this pilot program?
I I was saying, I mean, in my opinion, it would be under further notice um until we can get get some studies done, see if if it's effective. I I think that's the the gist of it, right? This is a pilot program, putting these speed bumps in areas uh for traffic calming measures. Um, um, and seeing if it's effective and slowing people down. If it's effective, great, then we look into actually a permanent solution that uh like you see in, I think, uh Ward Three.
Going to the more?
Yeah, going into Woodmore, there are two right there, and people slow down, those are effective. Uh, and another part of Ward Three, I think, I don't know if that's Tyrone Street. Um, there are some over there that are that are effective. So if it turns out to be effective, uh then we put some money behind, put in permanent um speed bumps in that area, and then we can try the the rubber bumps in another area uh to see if it'll be effective out there, but that would be my preference.
Okay, okay, so I I think our next, I our next steps, at least for the administration, is um we'll go out, we'll we'll do some measurements, we'll see um what we can buy, and then I believe what we can do is is put a resolution um in front of you guys, and we can decide from there.
Okay, yeah, and check the, check on the ones, at least, so so I understand in other areas if we wanna drill into the ground, even though I'm still cautious about who's gonna repair it. Uh, but I'm guessing that if those turn out to be effective, then we will probably lay over that with the permanent ones. But specifically for the Woodmore uh Town Center residents, um, I I wouldn't advocate for any drilling in the ground, but I would advocate for a removable, heavy-duty rubber one that can that can help. Um, and also, I I we we talked about this, just, I don't think, you know, anybody can stop us from doing it cuz the HOA is in full effect, but just reaching out to the attorney, make sure we're not into any um legal issues with D R Horton not turning over the streets to us. Uh, if we run into any trouble with that, uh which I don't foresee uh if it's not messing up or physically altering the 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 ground.
We we can definitely do that, and just to note, I did reach out to uh Karpinski, um I believe that was Friday last week. Just have yet to hear back from him.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilman Jones?
So uh, thank you, Council President. So we're talking about um, cuz I know that I get complaints about um Ward Three once you cross over Bright Seat Road going going towards uh Woodmore, coming up Glen Arden Parkway. There are two speed bumps there, but uh the citizens are complaining about a maybe a speed bump between, uh I think Chief mentioned it, uh uh Third and Second Street. Because once they come from that speed bump that's back off Seventh Street, they start speeding all the way up the hill and then down the hill to get to um. So uh that would be, you know, all the, uh I guess, between Third and Second Street, maybe between Fourth and Fifth Street.
Okay.
Let me sum up. Cuz, yeah, cuz they hit, you know, once that's, we get past Seventh Street, there's no more speed bumps. And they, and there's there's speeding there, so. And I think basically, there's the complaint between um Third and Second Street, especially this, my neighbor on the corner of Second Street, she's always talking about the speeding, so.
Okay.
And then maintenance, um, they would really have to be heavy-duty because if you I hopefully we have stopped, I still haven't seen uh Acting City Manager Simpson. I still haven't seen any signs for the uh tractor trailers, uh but I haven't seen any of them come back through the city uh from Glen Arden Parkway. Now, there there may be, I haven't had any her, haven't had any complaints from the citizens on uh Tyrell Cousins and Jeff about any more tractor trailers, so I'm not sure that any more are coming through the city. But I still haven't seen the signs that we proposed to put up so that the uh eighteen-wheelers will not come through uh that part of Glen Arden Parkway. Where are we with that?
Uh, yes, uh I'm not exactly sure. I will find an answer out for you. I'm going to make a note of that now.
Okay, cuz I thought we were getting, we're in the process of getting signs.
Chief Brian, go ahead, Chief. No problem. Yeah, we we were working on that, um, and I think we came to a standstill with that. Um, cuz what we did in the meantime, until we got the signs, well, we had um officers, Lieutenant Robson in particular, went up to these locations uh to the big stores, Costco's and other stores, and um advised them not to have them come through uh the Parkway and stuff, so that's why you haven't seen them for the most part, cuz we've been advising the big stores, telling them to take a different route to get to the stores and stuff, so that's why um and we tell them the problems we were having, we're knocking down the power lines and stuff, so I think that played a big part into it. But um I'll have to get with the city manager in reference to the signs, cuz we did start on them. And I think um we was trying to find out the exact capacity um for for the vehicles coming through the area. So um I'll get back with the city manager on that, and um we can get those signs up. But the reason you haven't seen them as much is cuz we've been actually going to the stores and advising the stores um not to have the vehicles come through there. Thank you.
Problem with the county also about the signs, was that rectified?
Um, that wasn't rectified. Um, we spoke about it, but we never followed up um cuz we never got the exact um weight that we were looking for. So we we did work with Deep Eye, and we had, you know, we had a couple of meetings, but we never followed up and finished up with that because the person I was working with uh ended up uh leaving Deep Eye. And uh it fell off my radar, honestly, so I didn't get a chance to follow up on it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, I just wanted to add that um originally when this um resolution came out, um Councilman Herring, I think he had um, when he spoke of some of the um removable speed bumps, I don't uh remember him saying that it was had to be any drilling. Um, so I would uh suggest that um administration connect with Councilman Herring just to um, that's he he said that he knew of some uh weird, I I can't remember exactly where uh they would be purchased, but um check with Councilman Herring a- in terms of um the type of speed bumps that he was uh had had in mind. Thank you, Council President.
Will do. Vice President, um, um, Councilwoman Fareed?
Thank you, Council President. Um, I was gonna say also that I contacted Mr. Karpinski asking for his um legal opinion on us proceeding while these streets are not turned over. I do think it's time, though, that we collectively make an appeal to the county, um both uh the county council members at large and um to the county executive as well, because this is now becoming a a public safety issue, and um we can't not address that, those needs for our citizens because of the lack of follow-through of D R Horton's part.
Yep. Okay. All right. Next topic of discussion is the stop sign camera proposal. And I think this is in conjunction with um efforts that were made in the Woodmore um Town Center residence for that, uh, Mr. Simpson?
Yes, good evening. Uh, as as mentioned, um, we did send out uh information about the stop sign camera information, and we also, uh I think that was maybe a month or so ago. Um, and we also did get some response back that we forwarded out to council uh from our attorneys. Uh, Mr. Beck Beckles, as you guys are familiar with, um, I believe they have uh instituted uh this or pilot program in that area. I'm going to uh turn things over to him for discussion or your request.
One, yeah, one, one second. So the um, sorry, I had a thought and just escaped my brain. Um. Shoot, I had a question. It just I lose out of my mind, so um, but yeah, go go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so uh Mr. Beckles and I have been in discussion. I've also uh met with the contractor, uh and they've had a proposal. Um, and that information has been uh brought to council's attention. Uh, we thought we uh revisited again considering the importance of uh some of the speeding issues that are particularly in the Woodmore Town uh Center area and Ward Three. Uh, and with permission, uh I can certainly turn things over uh for further discussion with Mr. Beck Beckles.
Mr. Beckles?
Evening, uh council members, uh mayor, chief, and city administrators. Uh, thank, good evening. I'll be brief. In uh June and July of this year, the Woodmore Town Center HOA conducted um partnered with O- Ovio uh for uh to review uh stop sign camera technology uh within the Woodmore Town Center footprint. And uh and that was in response to public safety issues partic- partic- particularly specifically for pedestrian public safety. Um, I think back in May, there was a pedestrian struck at the corner of Glen Arden Parkway uh in Sir Michael Place due to a failure, allegedly allegedly due to failure to stop at the stop sign there. Uh, so uh after um the the board uh voted to uh partner with uh Ovio uh do it to do testing within our footprint, uh the results were somewhat alarming. Um, for example, uh between June seventeenth and June twenty-fourth of this year at the Wood, at um Sir Michael and Glen Arden Parkway, there were two thousand fifty-six vehicles that went through that that stops, that that stop sign uh in that seven-day period. Uh, totally one thousand one hundred and twenty-five violations, and a thousand and sixty of those were serious violations, meaning that uh they were also uh excessive speed and and didn't attempt to stop. Uh, we also tested at the corner of Gieden Park and Sir Michael, um a seven-day period, after seventy-seven violations, thirty-four severe. Um, that that being said, um, the HOA looked at this particular previously, the HOA looked at other options for speeding and stop sign violations, but the cost of entry was just very high. Um, it's my understanding, uh, this particular technology in this footprint, uh i- it's a zero to low cost uh of entry uh to support it, it averages ten violations per day supports the the technology, the camera, the footprint uh to be administered. Uh, the the board shared our findings with GPD and the city administrator. Uh, and um at this point, uh within Ward Three, a- as we've discussed previously, there there are a couple of issues, one being the streets not being turned over. Uh, we did some research with our council and some technical experts, and determined that an MO, an MOU uh may be required, maybe one of the requirements to circumvent uh the streets being turned over while council uh uh works with county executives and and county uh folks to assist us along with D R Horton, as well as our our legal counsel as well. The second part of that is since we are HOA, uh and this stop sign cam technology actually creates revenue for the city. Um, the HOA is i- is suggesting a revenue sharing agreement. However, since this is a federal program, the revenue can only be used for specific purposes. And let me just give you an example, um, public safety projects, traffic calming devices, pedestrian safety, are kind of those those types of things that HRA can use. Uh, revenues, some of the revenue in Ward Three uh within within our footprint. Uh, and however, it cannot be used, for example, uh, you know, to to lower our assessments or for beautification projects or anything of that nature. And it would, it could be administered typically in the same fashion that the grant funding was administered through the city. Uh, just giving overview, um, the HOA would would submit proposal, let's say, for filing uh stripe devices of that nature or for um pedestrian signage that lights up at certain at certain walkways. Uh, they would submit that to the city. The city would uh do a walkthrough uh of of the proposed project. Uh, if it's approved, then the city would then administer uh a check to the HOAs uh either the vendor or the HOA's management company uh for sign-off uh of of the project. So there would be oversight, but here again, let me just reiterate. Uh, with any revenue sharing agreement, if if that's feasible, it would, it could not be used for anything but public safety projects, traffic calming, and pedestrian safety. Uh, the KHWA currently has several projects in its pipeline uh that meet that criteria, but that, we we can talk about that um uh later. I just wanted to give you an overview of of what we've, what we where we are so far uh with our traffic uh stop sign camera uh testing. Uh, I also have our vendor, Drew with Ovio. He he's 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 standing by. If you'd like to see a presentation, he can share his screen uh so that give you an overview of the technology, if you like.
I don't think that's necessary at the at the time.
Okay.
Um, so. So is there a bottom-line ask from? I guess the HOA?
Yeah, the ask is that, one, um, we enter into a MOU with the city uh that would basically uh enable uh since since we're not a municipality, so so this generates revenue, it goes to DMV, we cannot administer this. Uh, so uh to 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 place it in our footprint, the ask is that we do a MOU basically absorbing, you know, the the city of any liability uh, you know, with the device. Um, but and also giving permission to use our footprint to place the camera there. Uh, and they're solar-powered, by the way, so there's no, there's no um power that needs to be um uh uh connected to the to the uh the device, uh the solar-powered, and they're and they're battery battery backup, uh and they're very, I guess, uh they're low-profile. Uh, secondly, the ask is that we um through our legal uh entities uh look at what a revenue sharing agreement would look like and maybe use a model that we use for the um uh for the grant funding, if that makes sense, for that effort. So it's two asks.
Are there any questions from council members? Councilman Jones?
Council uh President, um, since there was so much feedback, I don't know where that we've never had this much uh noise on the Zoom before, but um can you reiterate uh what Mr. Beckles says about the two asks again? I heard some of it, but I Can you reiterate uh what Mr. Beckles says about the two ask again? I heard some of it, but I didn't. Was not clearly a- able to hear all of it.
Can you reiterate that, the two acts, Mr. Beckles?
Sure, uh Councilwoman uh Jones. The first ask is that the city. And the HOA enter into M O, an M O U memorandum of understanding. Um that would basically uh provide the city with permission. To place the cameras within Woodmore Townsend's footprint and not hold them liable for. Uh you know, any unforeseen or force majeure uh issues. The second ask is that the city and the HOA enter into a revenue sharing agreement since these cameras generate revenue. Um uh in it, in it's federally uh federally regulated. The HOA cannot use the revenue generated for things, anything other than public safety projects. Traffic calming and pedestrian safety. Um and I gave an example of, let's say, um at a corner, you know, a pedestrian crossing. You have a flashing light, uh you know, with a pedestrian sign. Or you have um, or we have one, uh traffic calming, uh we we put, let's say. The H A wants to put in uh speed bumps between the inner alley, alleyways. You know, things of that nature. It cannot be used to lower our assessments. It cannot be used to, let's say, uh renovate a clubhouse. Or anything of that nature. It has to be specific to to public safety, pedestrian safety, and traffic calming.
Okay, so one of the last emails I think I saw was concerning the revenue that um. I think Mr. Karpinski was asking about. Because we are a municipality, that the revenue should come all to the city. So what? The HOA is proposing is that we do what you say, a revenue sharing, where we share the revenue.
Well, if a portion, a portion of the revenue for Ward Three, not for, let's say, if you decide to do it citywide, one and two and three, we wouldn't. See any of that, that revenue at all. It would simply be for, for, for the cameras or camera. Let's say we have two cameras in Ward Three. We would, you know, uh share some of that for, for, for. Specific public safety, uh pedestrian safety, um uh and traffic calming within our footprint. But we would not be asking for any revenue from any other wards, no. It's, let's say, if there's one camera in, in, in our footprint, then we, then the ask would be. That we would be allowed to share in some of that revenue generated from that stop sign camera within our footprint.
Okay. Alright, that makes sense. Alright, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you, Council President.
Any questions?
Thank you. Uh the memorandum of understanding was with who?
That would be between the city and HOA. Uh can be drawn up with by our attorneys. Kevin Kearney is in Zars and Karpinski is, is, is uh for the city, I believe.
Not, not for the revenue sharing, but for the actual system.
Okay, for the system, that would be uh uh that would be with the, the city.
With the city with who, though?
Obvio. The vendors are on the line. Yeah, obvious, yes, yes.
Okay, so the first part would be a contract with Obvio. The second part, or the revenue sharing was a memorandum of understanding.
Correct.
Okay. Alright. Um, any other questions from co- questions from colleagues? Any other questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh would it be okay if I said just a couple of things?
Uh if you can be brief, please.
To- totally, um yeah, really, really appreciate the time. Um you know, as, as Obvio, you know, we're, we're very motivated to help with traffic safety and. Uh it sounds like speeding and and stop signs are are a big problem as well as giving officers time back. And you know, automated traffic enforcement can help with that. Um one quick note that I wanted to highlight is. We've, we've done a pilot program where we can quickly deploy trailers and and count the number of violations. That's what, that's what we did in Ward Three. I'm happy to do that for other parts of the town, um in case the, the town wants to see the stop sign violations and and um. Get a handle on it. Um and also, we've recently signed contracts with uh Morningside and. Um you know, Colmar, Berwin Heights and uh Capitol Heights are about to move forward with their programs as well. And so generally, we're seeing a lot of adoption for stop sign running uh enforcement uh over the course of the. Uh Prince George's County. Um and so just happy to support and and uh would love to be a part of Lenardan if we, we can support uh those initiatives. Um and and we've sort of shared some of the numbers. Um there's, there's a link that I'll just drop here um in the chat. For people to take a look at. Um. These are anonymized videos that, that sort of showcase the number of violations, um both. In, in both the locations that we did pilots for. Um so just wanted to make sure people could take a look and watch some of the videos and and see some of the numbers as well.
Thanks. Alright, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
If my clock comes up, it wasn't me.
Alright, um next up, GPS status update. Uh and Mr. Beckles, so we'll have to review the information and then. Uh pull back up with the, I mean, and just for context, council just got back from recess, so it'd be great if we could just. Get back up to date on that and then make a decision. On what, on, on what that looks like.
understood. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Alright, uh Ms. Councilwoman Jones?
Uh yeah, one quick question. So has all the information that they've given us tonight, has it been sent to the city manager? For us to um.
Yeah.
All the documentation has been sent?
Has it been? I believe, oh, uh, Mr. City Manager, I, I, I won't speak for you.
Yes, yes, and uh I do believe I sent over some of this information earlier while we were in recess. That was why, another reason why we were glad. To make sure uh we, we got this feedback and this opportunity right now. Uh we also did get information. Uh from uh legal advice on this as well, that was uh provided and sent out to the council. Um uh if I can, I'll make sure I resend that out to you guys. Uh definitely by tomorrow, if you don't have.
Uh you know what? That'll be great, just in case council members missed it while they were in recess. Inboxes could have been flooded and overlooked it.
No problem.
Alright. Next up is the GPS status update. Mr. Simpson?
Uh just a quick status update. Uh we did have to get away from Geotab, AT&amp;T and Geotab. Uh because of its uh effect on the vehicle's drivability, particularly with the police vehicles. Uh we are looking at, and I'm getting proposals from the other two options that were part of uh that particular resolution. Um I've gotten, I think the second one today. Uh and I'll also be confirming and getting with the chief as well as our fleet management to make sure. Uh these devices don't have that effect uh on any of our vehicles. Uh but just wanted to give you a brief update on that, that uh that is still in the works. We have not, uh it has not been any cost to us. Uh with AT&amp;T. Uh I see you, President Curtis. Uh. Yes, there has not been a dime spent there. Um they are uh recouping all of that. Uh there is a bill that I believe we need to make sure, which AT&amp;T and GPS lockbox. Uh are definitely uh understanding and will uh take care of. Uh once we can confirm that bill through fleet management for whatever damages may have been caused. Uh to the, to the one particular or two, two vehicles uh that have been repaired. Uh and they will pay for that.
Okay, um. Thank you. I appreciate it. Um. Red Left Group Architects Status Update.
Yes, you guys should have seen uh an email. I think I sent it out to everyone in the city council. It had some hard number.
Yeah. I'd say give us some time to look over it. Um a- at least for my part, it, it, it looked. One, the elevator project looks to be in detail, but the other one's kind of summarized, so it's not like an allocation of like. It, it, it wasn't given the same attention as the elevator project, which I would like to see because I would like to know. What budget item is going with what. I mean, with the nutrition center update and the council chambers updated, didn't look bad, but. Also don't want to get into a situation where. Because everything is grouped together and nothing is, you know, a budget line item. We're going over budget because we didn't prepare for something or um. Those expectation that one line item was going to be eighty-five thousand dollars and now it's two hundred thousand dollars, so we didn't know about it. So it's very, those two areas are very generalized. And I also understand if um council members haven't even seen it yet because it was sent during. This meeting. So just giving council members uh some, some time to, to do that.
Yes.
Uh and the last item, if there are any questions from council, I don't want to take the.
Yeah, the last item, actually, we sort of, no, I mean, we may not have, during the same walkthrough when we did Church Street. That was brought to our attention, uh some very uh serious sidewalk issues. Along Glen Arden Parkway or both sides of Glen Arden Parkway from Delwood to Apples. Um. We are waiting, uh Nelson from N Z I should be getting us some feedback from that. Uh one of the things, uh we did discover that though that particular sidewalk damage was not. Doesn't appear to be related to the county storm drain. Um the only reason some of the work has not taken place in Ward One. Is because we are working with the county now for them to take care of the damage to some of the storm drains that have caused. Not only sidewalk repairs, but also a sinkhole on the corner of Delwood and Glen Arden Parkway. Uh however, they are aware of it. Uh it looks like they've done some markings. Uh we're hoping within this next thirty days. Uh particularly after our meeting last week with um the associate director, Jessica. I guess her last name, F- uh Feldman right now, uh with storm drain man- ma- maintenance uh for P T County. Uh assured that those issues would be taken care of uh much sooner than later. Um so I'm just waiting for that to be nailed down. However, um we should be providing along with the Church Street proposal. Uh some numbers uh relative to some sidewalk uh work that definitely needs to be replayed uh along Glen Arden Parkway.
Yeah. Um, any questions or comments for a discussion by us council members? Here, I just had a question. Uh so there was work done on Glen Arden Parkway this afternoon. Um, what was that for?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'd have to double check to see. I don't know.
It's by the, it's by the library on Glen Arden Parkway.
Oh, that may be W S S C. I think they're doing some uh.
Uh re, they've been working on it for over a year, so some, some, not storm drains, but some water uh things. And within the city of Glen Arden are going to be, um they re, re, redid them. They're upgrading them. So it's from uh Lansdowne Village, which is the apartments all the way up across the street from Old Land of Amal Site. All the way down to uh Ardmore-Ardwick Road where they're doing this uh rehab by W S S C. And it's, you know, you'll see some uh streets where they have the blue, they have blue circles around the water things that are going to be upgraded. So I think it's two, that was one, there was one right there at the library, and there's two, I think, coming up uh Glen Arden Parkway like right before First Street.
Yes.
Okay. They've been doing, and I, I got a postcard. I'm not sure everybody else. Yeah, I know my area got postcards and letters to say that this project is still going forward, but they started that project. Couple of years ago, and they're just now getting, you know, getting down to where they're supposed to be.
I, I don't, thank you, Councilwoman Jones, for, and Mr. Simpson for, for um for that information. I don't know who does the timing on these things, but they didn't start till rush hour. Uh which held up buses and held up everybody going to and from. And I don't, I mean, I know this is outside our, you know, what we are, we are doing, but is there any way we can connect with them? So they can do things like midday and not hold up, especially with the bus system where. These buses going back and forth from schools are already behind. Uh I mean, it was. At least in my, when I witnessed it. It's not a big deal, but um.
Yeah, but they subbed that work out to E and R too. E and R is another, it's a subcontract that we're doing, fixing the street.
Okay.
Yeah, because they, W S S C did the work on Friday, like a couple of Fridays ago. And it was like around the, around two thirty and they. I think, oh, Mr. Simpson, it was the day that we were over there at uh Ward One looking at the sidewalks. When we left over there around one o'clock, I came back on, on my side and they were just starting to do the work. And they tore the streets up then, and then it went into rush hour. But today, they came back around because I went back over to my mom's about two o'clock. And uh they had just brought in all of the equipment and on both sides of the streets, on the off streets. But they hadn't started to work. So when I came back around, like when uh Council President said around rush hour. They were just starting to do the work then, so. But E and R is the one that sub has uh the subcontracting. W S S C. So, and we do have a government liaison to W S S C. It used to be Karen Riley, but we have a, a new person. And we could ask them about that, but I'm not sure that we could make any headway with that because that's always, you know, the utilities. Uh we do what we want.
Yeah, I figured. It was a long shot, but just thought.
Yeah, yeah, we could ask them at courtesy. Yeah.
Alright, um any other comments from council before we adjourn? Here and on, thank you. Our next meeting is, will be next Tuesday at seven o'clock, a public hearing. Um the time is nine oh eight.
Council President, our next meeting is tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Oh, sorry. Uh thank you. Thank you. Our next meeting is tomorrow. Our next work session is tomorrow. Um it's a special work session to go over the um charter res- charter resolutions. Yes, charter amendments. Um. Quarter city of Glen Arden, so we welcome citizens back out to witness what the changes will be as we discuss it. Um and the public hearing for all the legislation that we discussed tonight will be next Tuesday. Um so thank you for that clarity, uh Councilwoman Fareed, and I think Vice President Ferguson was seconding you on that one, so thank you. With that being said, the, if there are no other comments, the time is nine oh nine. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. See you guys tomorrow.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.